Okay, uh, let's see. Madam Secretary, are you here? Are you in that meeting with all those people?
I am here with many people.
Right. Um, I think we sent you some questions.
Not this go around, um, we had received before our last, oh, oh, from OFA, yes, yes. Three questions, yes.
So you want to start by going over them?
Um, sure, let me just pull that out, give me one moment. Um, so the first question had to do with the staff positions we had included in our original, um, request to the, uh, our original budget request. We have pared that down, we know this is a rough budget cycle, but the positions that still remain are in order of critical importance, right? Um, the first are two program manager positions, I won't get into all the programs that we have on our agenda, but they're all outlined there. Um, but there are many in right now, the way our elections department is structured, we basically have election attorneys and admin staff trying to manage very large scale projects like the tabulator rollout, like the revamping of the voter registration system, et cetera. Not to mention all of the ongoing major projects that, um, we have to manage that have to do with, um, reporting that we have to provide to the federal government. Um, it's a very full exhaustive list, keeping our training updated, et cetera. And it's all listed there and we really could use two, uh, at least two positions to help, especially given that we already know something's going to happen with universal access to absentee ballots. We know, for example, early voting will likely change this legislative session. Um, and it seems like we're moving toward more and more election changes instead of fewer. Um, the-
Can you hold on one second, Madam Secretary? Senator Anwar, um, do you want to run the meeting? This is Kathy.
Hi Kathy, um, I'm, I'm in three meetings, but there's voting on, on, um, various, um, 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 things that are happening in housing, so I may be in and out.
Okay, so I'll continue running the meeting whenever you want to take over, just let me know. Unless, unless Kevin comes on, I haven't seen Kevin come on yet. Just so you know, so you're all set if, if we continue with the secretary?
Please do, thank you.
Okay, Madam Secretary, go on to B.
Yep, thank you Senator, uh, staff attorney, this is a position that not, not only pays for itself, but some of the other positions that we've requested. Um, there are entities that are doing business in Connecticut from outside of the state and they are required to be registered with the state. We know who they are, we literally don't have the manpower to go out and follow up with them. And essentially when we do, we find out they owe us money. Um, and even if we cut a deal because they didn't know they owed us so much money, we anticipate bringing in seven hundred to nine hundred thousand annually in terms of these fees. Um, the third position, right now we have one person who is our webmaster, graphic designer, and she does some IT work on the side. Um, and that doesn't sound like much, but between the elections division and the business services division, we have hundreds of changes that happen every, I mean, sometimes every month. Um, it's the creation of various forms that have to be submitted. It is, um, you know, tweaking messaging. Um, if you've been following the FinCEN debacle, like it's gone back and forth about twelve times in the last month. And every time there's an update, that type of thing has to go on our business services website. And then when you think about graphic design between all of our outreach work, business services work, election work, we often have to create templates of things for local election staff. Um, as you imagine, like one person trying to do all of that becomes an impossible task. And a lot of what we have to do is very time sensitive. That is why we've, uh, oh, and then we have the new, um, ADA requirements, um, uh, coming under, uh, effect, uh, moving into next year. So almost everything we have on our website has to be converted to make it ADA compliant. Um, so that just adds another, uh, level of work. Item D, oh, sorry.
Secretary again, Representative Ryan? Representative Ryan?
Yes.
Kevin, do you want to run the meeting? Sal is doing, uh, combination voting and other things and it's your committee, so I was just starting it off, so she is working on, the secretary's working on, is it answering three questions and she's on section, uh-
I, I can see where she is.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead Kevin, then you'll take over.
Why don't you continue, Madam Secretary?
Perfect, thank you Representative, um, so item D is for ITA three position. We manage, um, an incredible number of databases, including the voter registration system, ballot tracking, online absentee ballot applications and so on. So this is a technical person in our IT department. Um, and as you know, we're rolling out the new voter registration system in a couple of months. A new election management system at the end of the year. There are new technical requirements with the new tabulators. So this position would help us stay abreast of all of this work. And last but not least, we have a publications director. Um, we also, uh, uh, in fact, I feel like, uh, Chris Drake, would you mind explaining that one? It's so techni- like in thirty seconds.
Sure, hi, Chris Drake, I'm Director Business Services Division. Um, that, that's to replace a, a person that we used to have. Um, the two primary responsibilities are the e-regulation system and the, uh, Connecticut Blue Book State Register and Manual. And then also our records retention, we have two staff librarians, but we don't have anyone to really supervise those librarians, we used to have somebody. Um, so we're looking to reestablish that position.
Thank you, Chris, and would you mind just going on to, so question number two had to do with the fraud mitigation software in our business services department? And whether or not it was the cost of a software license, um, and how that cost was allocated?
Sure, hi, um, so, and I understand it's a big number, we're asking for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. The, one of the questions was, is that an annual cost? And the answer is yes, we think that is what the annual cost will be, at least in the short term. There are about three point six million, uh, logins to business dot C T every year. So we worked with the AS bit, bits to, um, try to come up with a unit cost per login on what it would cost to try to identity, um, check and, uh, risk check people who were logging into the website. And so we came up, uh, with ten cents a login and three point six million, uh, login. So we anticipate that that software that we also noted in our write-up is currently being used by Department of Labor. And I believe Department of Motor Vehicles is looking to implement it as well. So we'd be using the same software that they're looking to use. We think our, our piece of it will cost about three hundred and sixty thousand a year.
Thank you, and question number three had to do with what I described as probably an error in the governor's budget, it cut our printing budget by a hundred thousand. And in conversation, it was, it seemed like they thought that money could come out of the blue book, book printing. Um, our printing costs come down into three big buckets, um, like the blue books, our election related printing and our business services related printing. You know, um, such as sending, uh, letters to certain entities, uh, notifying them that they're out of compliance or they're closed or something like that. The blue book printing, we've already cut, um, each year over the last several years. When I arrived here, we were paying about ninety thousand for blue books. Last year we paid twenty one thousand, I think there's a typo in this memo which says twenty eight, but it's twenty one. So the cut was for a hundred thousand. Um, so if that cut is supposed to be taken out of the blue books, we already cannot, we're already below that threshold. Um, so those were the three questions and our responses in brief, you also have them written in front of you. Um, happy to answer any other question.
Hello, I'm sorry, got a little bit late, does anybody have any other questions? I'm just kind of reviewing what you had already done in the answers, so. Um, does anyone else have any questions? Yes, Representative, is it Acker? Yes, Representative Acker.
Thank you, thank you Chair Ryan, I appreciate that. A couple, couple, first of all, appreciate the follow-up to the three hundred and sixty thousand on a yearly basis, that makes sense, that it's a we'll call it a subscription kind of thing and, or, or, you know, tabulated that way. I appreciate that, uh, and we did, I, I do appreciate the meeting that we had earlier regarding positions. Um, and one being that the, you know, staff attorney one, uh, sounds like a good investment, uh, and I, I know the other ones, um, that you brought up, but, uh, that one there seems like a, you know, something that we should be working on, so we'll, we'll talk with the chairs and, and other members of this committee to see how we assist in that position. Um, but I, and this, this was not asked, and, and again, I, you know, talking about positions, it came to my attention that in two thousand and twenty-two, we hired a misinformation officer. Um, is that staff, uh, is that, that position filled? And, um, I know it's a, a new question, uh, but it came after the, the other questions, um, uh, from, from, from the discussions with, um, my caucus. And they said, we've had somebody that does it, misinformation officer, what do they do? Does that position fill then, what is their, what do they do?
Yeah, and I'll, um, kick it to someone else to answer who was here when that started, but I'll begin with saying, I feel like that term is a press term, right? Like that person was never on our books as like a misinformation officer. Um, when that, um, first came up during the pandemic, I believe it was, and someone else fill in because I wasn't here, but it was a consultant that was hired for that purpose. Since that time, there is an actual staff person, their title is-
It's a, it's an information technology, uh, analyst three. Um, and it's a, a cybersecurity office position.
So it's a standard classification that has standard responsibilities, cybersecurity is one of them. Um, but, you know, it's not like they're sitting there every day just looking for misinformation. That is a small part of what they do.
Okay, and that's a, and that's a, you said information techno- technician three?
Yes, and I, I would just say Kristen Sullivan, Director of Elections, I think, um, as part of cyber, his cybersecurity responsibilities, he's both focused on election security and the security of our election systems generally, is my understanding.
Yeah, that's a good way to explain it, he also, uh, worked very closely with DAS bits. Um, like just to give you an example, um, leading into last election season, uh, there's monthly meetings with the Fusion Center. So the Department of Emergency Services, DAS Bits, FBI, State Police, like all the players you might, uh, imagine are part of the Fusion Center. So he is giving reports on any, um, knocking at the door of our systems. It, it, it's standard cybersecurity.
Okay, I appreciate that, I may have some follow-up questions on that, but I appreciate that. It seemed like an odd term when I was, when somebody asked me about it, so, uh, but, uh-
It makes for good headlines.
No, it hurt my interest, sort of say, and so I look forward to, uh, uh, possibly further dialogue on that. I do want to thank you for the language, uh, that you sent to me regarding the audit questions I had brought up. And I will work with, um, the, this committee, it may have to be done in a different manner, but I, I will diligently work on that, uh, to get, to move that forward. To get, get that piece, uh, piece, and I may have further conversations, I'll work with, uh, Chair Ryan, uh, and Chair Anwar on that, and probably Senator Austin, of course, will kick in.
Great, I appreciate that, thank you Representative.
Anyone else have any questions? I have to play a little bit of catch-up, if nobody else has any questions, did you have anything else you'd want to offer, Secretary?
Um, I think I would just say, which you've heard me say many times before. Um, the responsibilities of this office are, uh, quite massive and the sort of style here has always been do more with less. Um, and certainly, uh, many of us who are sitting in this room go over and above and try to do two jobs in addition to the jobs we have. But, uh, in particular in the election space, things are changing so rapidly. And every legislative session, laws are coming out that have quite a cascading effect across our office. And elections are not the thing we want to screw around with and like hope for the best on. Um, every single thing that we do has to be incredibly detail oriented. It requires follow-up and we have a town by town administration of elections. So it's not like other states where we just have to make sure, like, eight county directors are great, we have to make sure it's universally applied across a hundred and sixty-nine towns. And in my opinion, we're getting very close to our staffing breaking point. Um, so I'm raising the alarm now and hoping that the legislature will help us help all of Connecticut.
Um, I just have one other question and I've already forgotten what it was. Um, as far as, no, I, I think I already have the answer to that. Are, are people working in the office now, what's, I think we've asked this before, but are they, are, are your folks still working mostly remotely or are they in the office to accomplish your goals?
Um, yeah, under contract, they only have to work, they don't have to work in the office, uh, full-time, I can let HR chime in on that.
Good morning, uh, good afternoon, I'm Emily from HR. Yeah, eighty percent is usually what most of our staff are working, we are encouraging them to be in the office more, but their contract allows them eighty percent, so.
But I will say, there are, um, many of our-
Are you saying eighty percent, eighty percent out of the office or in the office?
Out.
Out, um, but there are many people who go above and beyond and come in, like I come in every day. Uh, so do many others. I would also say there are, uh, periods of time where that may alter. So, uh, right before the early voting period, for example, and during early voting, most of the election staff were in full-time because we were monitoring like the helpline for registrars. Business services, we collect annual reports between January and, uh, March thirty-first. And, you know, we average about twelve hundred inquiries a week. Um, our, uh, requests that we have to process, so during that time, more people come in more often. So it's a bit of a mixed bag.
Right now, we have Business Services Division, we, we put a hold on their telework, um, because we're calling it kind of an emergency situation where we need all hands on deck for an influx of work that's come in. Um, we did get pushback from the union, but we were able to successfully do that. So today, for example, we have a very full house, um, and it's very nice. Um, we do it, you know, when we can and as emergencies allow us to, I suppose, um. But yeah, our hands are a little bit tied in that regard.
The other question I had is, Representative Acker said you sent him some information, did we all receive that information? Or did it just go to him?
I believe it just went to him, um, uh, and I, if I recall, it was mainly related to a bill that is not related to appropriations about, um, uh, an issue that he had asked about regarding our audit.
Okay, cause he mentioned, I know you had mentioned something about the, uh, uh, what was it, the attorney three and the fact that they brought in a lot of funding, I didn't know if that was part of that information that you gave him.
No, it was related, um-
It was just the bill.
Yeah, during our last, uh, meeting, uh, he asked about, um, something we had gotten dinged on in our audit. And we explained, like, it goes back decades, this issue. So we have a bill that we've proposed every year to change it, so we sent over that language.
Okay, and he promised you he'd get that changed for you.
I heard that too, I heard that promise.
I need to get more, anyway, we'll, we'll probably-
Thank you Representative Ryan, I appreciate that.
Any, any, any other questions from anyone else? Okay, if we do have anything else, we know where to find you, but thank you for coming in today and, uh, Zooming in today so we could kind of clean up what was left to you.
Excellent, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Taylor, do we have anyone else?
Contracting Standards Board.
Oh, what time will they come?
They're on, they're on.
So we should talk to them?
It would be nice.
Sure. This is Greg Daniels, uh, good afternoon, Senator Austin, Chair, um, Ryan, um, and distinguished members of the, uh, Government, um, Appropriations Subcommittee. Uh, my name's Greg Daniels, I'm Executive Director of State Contracting Standards Board. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you today, um, and address, um, the proposed budget, um, for the biennium twenty twenty-six, uh, proposed by the governor. Um, I'm, I'm here today to, um, request, uh, additional funding, um, the State Contracting Standards Board made a request of approximately eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars for, um, fiscal year twenty twenty-six and eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and one dollars for twenty twenty-seven. Um, just a modest, um, or conservative increase of about, uh, one point three percent, um, uh, between the two years. Um, and we, uh, we risked and we received, um, in the governor's budget, uh, a, a difference of about a hundred and seven thousand dollars for, um, fiscal year twenty-six and a hundred and eight thousand dollars, um, shortfall, um, for fiscal year, um, twenty twenty-seven. Um, that difference, uh, remarkably different, um, it cuts not only into our operating costs, but also, um, cuts into our ability to, in, into our salaries and fringe, um, benefits. So we're very much concerned about how that might impact our ability to move forward as an agency and, uh-
But you're saying this isn't for new personnel, it's to take care of the personnel you currently have dealing with the increase in costs, salary and benefits?
It, 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 not only, it cuts, it, uh, obliterates our, uh, operating costs. And it, it cuts into our personnel, um, funding of, and into it, uh, um, in an amount for, uh, about eleven thousand five hundred for the first fiscal year, uh, well, for both fiscal years, about eleven thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
And so our concern here is, uh, we're, we're coming to the committee asking if, if, if by any chance we can get any funding, you may be able to offer, um, restoration in any funding. Um, we've done, um, great work over the, uh, past few years and, and, and not only, um, uh, auditing program, but we've built up our, um, education training program. Um, we've, um, we've got many agencies now who are, um, who are enrolling in our, our, uh, learning management system. We built out, uh, we built, we bridged, we bridged, um, training, um, with not only, um, some of our statutory mandated, um, training partners like DAS, um, Office of, um, Ethics, uh, but some of our other, uh, training folks. But we're also building, um, relationships with agencies that not, that were not mandated to work with. And we have, um, the, some other agencies who are reaching out asking for training, who are not required to be training and we're welcoming all who are interested in, um, learning more about, um, procurement, um, and contracting. Um, and we're finding, um, not only through our audit findings, but, um, we're, we're finding that more and more through word of mouth, um, that more and more agencies are interested in, in training their procurement professionals because there's no other outlet to do that, no central, um, opportunity for agencies to do that. And we're, we're seeing that there's a great need across the state and we understand the value we add to, um, to the state in doing that. And there is a cost value to, to the state in doing that, for, um, providing that to our, um, to the, um, to, to the agencies and also, uh, to, um, um, the citizens of Connecticut, there is a value to the state. So we're asking if you can, uh, assist us and continue to build this program, and not only this, this program, but our audit program, which is, uh, doing great, um, we're really moving along and, um, and we're building a triennial audit program, which is in its second fiscal year. Um, and, um, that, that program is starting to really take off. But without your help, without the operating, um, funding for that and without the support to, to, um, fund our, our, our members, our membership, because they're critical to, um, our success, we can't, they can't meet, and we need your help. I can't, I can't hear you.
You're muted, Chair.
I'm sorry, I have Representative Godfrey in the room next to me, if I don't mute you, you'll hear him more than you'll hear me. Um, I, my question was, um, this is not above the amounts you're asking for, that's included the amounts you're asking for, for those programs as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I think, do you have anything else that you'd like to tell us?
Um, um, in addition to, um, both fiscal years, we're, uh, we're approaching a shortfall for this current fiscal year, given the circumstances. Um, um, we're, we're, I, I believe approaching, um, roughly a thirty-three thousand dollar, um, shortfall for this fiscal year. And I'm not sure where that, um, may lead us and that, that's simply because of, um, um, the circumstances, we've been meeting more, um, and, um, our, uh, we have a robust board. We've been doing a lot of work to get the agency up and off the ground. Um, and we have an active, um, board, we're doing a lot. Um, and we're hoping that you can, um, assist as well with that. Uh, I can't hear.
Chairman Ryan, you're still muted, you-
It sounds the same either way, um. What, what is the, um, where we asked the question? Okay, so when you're saying you're having thirty thousand dollars shortfall, what kind of expenses are the, is that thirty thousand covering?
It's all operating.
Okay. And it's because of the additional meetings you're having with your active board?
Correct. And they're good meetings.
Now, are you meeting in person or is this, because I guess you must be meeting in person, because it-
Person, virtual, hybrid.
Anything else, sir?
We have a question. We have a question.
I have a question, Chairman, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Representative Ackert?
Thank you, thank you. And uh, Mr. Daniels, thank you for being with us. Uh, I've got a couple of questions, you know, um, mainly, you know, I'm looking at the, and maybe Taylor, if there's some language that's before here that I'm not seeing, but I'm looking at the line item for the, for the Contracting and Standards Board. I'm seeing, you know, ninety-six thousand, but am I missing something? Or maybe I'm uh not looking in the right area? Uh, agency requested for the Contracting and Standards Board was seven, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand nine oh two. And that was what's reflective, so I'm not sure if we're.
That, that was what was proposed by the Governor's Office.
It was his agency requested.
The Governor's, the Governor's proposed budget was seven sixty-six nine oh two.
Right, it matched what I'm reading as the agency requested in my paperwork here.
Yeah, I see what he's talking about too. It does say that. So you're saying that that's not what you really requested, you requested.
Our request to OPM was um, was eight hundred seventy-four thousand six oh one for fiscal year two oh, um, twenty-twenty-six. And for twenty-twenty-seven, it was eight hundred eighty-five thousand seven oh one.
Okay, because that does not reflect what we were given as a budget document from the agency. So unless they, because I'm looking at the numbers in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five will go without, it's a seven thirty-seven zero five two was the appropriation. And then you had it, then they, there was an increase by agency request. So you're saying that those are wrong numbers, Mr. Daniels. Is that correct?
Those, those numbers must be wrong. Um, and, and is that the?
That's what you're seeing, right, Chair Ryan?
Right. So in other words, even if they're the, even if they're the, the numbers they put in, that's not what you want now. You need the mon, you need the amounts that you just asked us about.
Who can we ask from, uh, where the, whoever wrote this document up to, where do they get their numbers, Chair Ryan?
Taylor, do you have an idea where these came from?
Um, those figures, as they were reported in the budget, come directly from OPM.
So when it says agency though, is it the agency that we're dealing with, like the uh, uh, Contracting Standards Boards or is it OPM's numbers?
Um, the Governor's Proposed Budget comes in from OPM's numbers.
So it's not necessarily the numbers that were given by Contracting Board to OPM. It's, it's what OPM decided to put in the budget.
Um, that's where we got the information from. I can certainly follow up. Try to get some clarification and some additional information.
Okay. Representative Ackert would like that.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chair Ryan. Absolutely, because, you know, we're trying to deal with what somebody is asking for. And then if that's not reflective of what the agency needs, but somebody just puts the numbers in the, in the books, that's no good to us. So if you could, no good to the department. Um, uh, then a follow-up, um, uh, Mr. Ryan, or Chair Ryan?
Thank you.
Um, uh, Mr. Daniels, the, you, you are full-staffed right now and you said um, um, that's seven full-time? Is that what I read?
Correct.
Seven full-time. And then how many volunteers do you have? Uh, I know that you have a lot of, uh, the, many in the trades, uh, is that correct?
Correct.
What, what's your volunteer base?
So we have uh currently thirteen. We had one resignation in a, uh, I believe it was as of the end of Sep- September.
Oh, from what board?
Uh, from, from our, from our membership.
Okay, so that's that, what, you're the volunteer board. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's one board, not multiple boards?
Right.
Contracting Board, okay.
Is it right?
Okay, all right. And they get a per diem or something, travel, something?
So they get a per diem um reimbursement per day, two hundred per day, as well as um reimbursement for expenses, uh, mileage. And if they're, let's say, if you purchase something related to a meeting um, agency, we would reimburse that as well.
Okay.
In their capacity, obviously.
Yeah. And your primary function, your, your um employee's primary function is um, is uh regulatory?
Correct.
Doing what, an example of?
We would provide um regulatory or we're combination. So we would do not only education, but we also would provide um regulations as to procurement, contracting, standards. We would um help and help, well, collaborate not only with DAS, uh, agencies like the Office of Attorney General, Governor's Office, um, if need be, so any of the other agencies, higher ed, um, in maintaining um high contracting standards or, and in some instances, enforce um, um, compliance um, with respect to contracting standards. So it's very important that um, we, and we, of course, we audit. So there is a level of um oversight and enforcement on our part, on our part, to the extent we can.
I, I, I'm a contractor, so I, as long as being a legislator, so I would love to get a, 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 a meeting and, and, uh, and, you know, see what your office does. I greatly would appreciate that. So thank you for your time here today. And uh, that's the questions uh that I have right now. Um, and I just, if we could, uh, I'll follow up with OFA um, as to what, you know, on that earlier question, uh, Taylor, where, where did those numbers come from? And I guess on a global picture, are all, are the, are the numbers that we get for agency request actually agency-requested numbers? So.
Um, I think I can provide a little clarity on that right now. Um, the agency-requested column can be adjusted by OPM. Um, all the agency's budgets, their executive branch agencies, OPM can um represent what they feel should be the agency request for that column.
Oh, okay. Well, Phoenix, thank you so much. That, this, that's what I'm new, as you know, to the system. And if steam's coming out of my ears right now, there's a reason, because I'm going off what I think the agency is requesting, and then Mr. Daniels is like, well, those numbers aren't what we requested. And so how can we build a state budget on, and help the departments get the right amount of money if OPM says, wow, they don't really want that request?
Yeah, um, I know, it does add a little confusion.
I don't think.
I appreciate that, Phoenix. Thank you for your input.
I don't think this is the first time we've seen this or the only agency that we've seen it in, so.
Well.
But we'll, we'll try to get some clarification. Do we have any other questions? Uh, now, what else? Is there any other questions? I guess we, we appreciate your input. We appreciate your testimony and the information you've given us, and we will do the work that we have to do. I would know where to find you if we have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a schedule in front of me. Do we have anyone else?
No, sir, I believe that's it. Taylor, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do we want to go out and find somebody else? Okay, we do have a meeting on the thirteenth where we're going to meet with a couple of folks. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Same time, four o'clock? Okay. And then we have the work session, decision-making session after that. All right. Well, again, we appreciate everyone being here and the information and uh, I think that's where we will go from here. Thank you.
Thank you.